...in Southeast Asia. And whereas, while in Kuwait, the 621st provided construction, geodetic surveys, prepared detailed construction plan drawings, and executed quality assurance and control, the unit's dedication and commitment to the duty and mission accomplishment sees it as postured and support future contingency operations worldwide. The whereas, the 621st formerly part of the 505th Engineer Combat Battalion Headquarters and Support Company was federally recognized in May 24th of 2007 as a standalone unit and deployed in Baghdad, Iraq in June 2009. Five soldiers of the 21st have been, five, 621st have been deployed more than once and five soldiers have been deployed more than three times in the war on terrorism. And whereas, the 14-member team of the 621st arrived safely in the spring of 2015, was officially welcomed home by the North Carolina National Guard on June 26, 2015, at a welcome home ceremony held in Charlotte, North Carolina. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners extends its grateful appreciation to the 621st Survey and Design Team of the North Carolina Army National Guard for their valoury and bravery during the Operation Spartan Shield engagements and command to their families, friends, and others who supported them so diligently during their deployment. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Commission presents the 621st Survey and Design Team with the Second Gaston County Shield of Honors as enacted the policy adopted by the County Commission on October 10, 2006, adopted this the 10th day of November in 2015. Thank you for your service, but also thank you for more than that. Everybody in this room is here because of our freedom, because of you helping us get there. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
On behalf of the 621st Survey and Design Team, the 505th Engineering Battalion, and the 130th Moving and Hensmire Brigade, we'd like to thank Gaston County Commissioner's citizens for the continued support of the North Carolina Army National Guard and its citizen soldiers. When I joined the military in June 24th of 1996, I was assigned as a technical engineer right here in Gastonia. It's kind of where I laid my roots down. Over the 18 years, I've been privileged to witness the growth and the relationships that has grown significantly between the North Carolina Army National Guard and our city of Gastonia and the county of Gaston. And I'd like to think that we've surpassed out of a business relationship and we've kind of grown to become a family. And I want you to know that the 621st, the 505th, and the 130th Moving and Hensmire Brigade definitely sees that, and we thank you so much for your continued support of the North Carolina Army National Guard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, why are you up there? I think you have another commendation, and if you want to present that at this time.
Tina Omer, Tommy, come on. How are you all?
I'm good.
I think this is where Mr. Booker and Mr. Dedman get to stand up tall and proud on this one. Whereas, Ms. Marlena Heraclis, a Forest View Senior, has set a remarkable standard of community service and personal achievement among her peers. And whereas, Marlena's values, hard work, and dedication are reflected in her academic accomplishments, she is ranked first in her 2016 class as co-valedictorian. She was also a junior marshal, co-chief marshal. She is a Beta Club Honor Society member and is a member of the Treasurer of the National Honor Society. She is also selected as North Carolina State Chemistry and Science Polymer Camp. And whereas, she has served in many leadership roles, including the event planner for the organization of Tim Tebow's Foundations of a Night to Shine, team captain of the Forest View varsity softball team in 2015, North Carolina House Page for the House of Representatives. And whereas, her desire to give back to the community is evident, and her passion to help others. She, she, some of others, some of her other efforts include serving as a volunteer for Holy Angels Cherubs Cafe, the Candy Boutique, a volunteer dance instructor for disabled dance students at the Gastonia Dance Abilities Academy, and the public relations coordinator for the Junior Civitans Club. She has also volunteered for Rachel's Challenge in Gaston County Special Olympics and has served as the Mayor's Youth Council School Representative for Forest View. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends Ms. Marlena Catherine Heraclis for her inspiring work ethic, rooted values, and philap, 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 thank you Donna. We'll go for that one. Philapric spirit, and urges all citizens to join us in applauding her passion and dedication. The Board further extends its deepest wishes to her as she serves and moves toward her future goals. This to be adopted the 10th day of November in 2015. Marlena, thank you so much. You mean so much, actually.
I would like to thank the Gaston County Commissioners for the commendation for service to the community here in Gaston County. I consider it a privilege to work with special needs individuals throughout the county and especially at Holy Angels and Dance Abilities. These individuals that I work with have given and taught me more than I could ever imagine. I am pleased to announce that on February 12, 2016, at South Minister Church, we will be hosting the Night to Shine Prom. This is a worldwide movement for an unforgettable prom night experience for individuals with special needs. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. You don't have another one, do you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and start it as, I guess whoever for the Gaston Awards. Okay, never mind. I'll do it from up there.
Okay. At this time, we will, we have the Judge Gaston, Judge William Gaston Awards presentation, and it's a very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage citizen participation in our county government and community involvement. In 1998, the County Commissioners established an annual award bearing the name of the county's namesake, Judge William Gaston, 1778 through 1844, to recognize those volunteers who have demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership. Since its establishment, the County Commissioner has honored 53 recipient volunteers for their services to the, to Gaston County community. This year, the Board of Commissioners has the privilege of presenting the Gaston Award, William Gaston Awards, excuse me, to three outstanding individuals, Dr. Gina Ramsey, Mr. Robert Brown, and Ms. Annette Carter. At this time, I will ask Dr. Gina Ramsey to come to the podium along with any family or friends she has with her to receive the Gaston Award, and Commissioner Brown is going to...
Commissioner Carter, Ms. Ramsey won't be here. She'll be at the next meeting. She had an engagement, she had to attend with her son, so she'll be attending our next meeting.
Okay.
So, I'm going to call Mr. Robert Brown up, if that's okay. Mr. Robert S. Bobby Brown. I'm one of the few people to get away with that. He's letting me know.
Only one.
How you doing, buddy? I've known Robert a long time, and his middle initials S, a lot of people don't know that stands for center, but until we were in high school, I thought it was Robert Center Brown. And I helped him along with that a few times. Since this isn't a roast, I'm going to go ahead with this award for Robert. He's probably glad it isn't a roast right now. Charitable native Robert Brown has firmly ingrained himself in greater Gaston County community. His outreach and volunteer work is truly inspirational, and his diligence is evidence in his readiness to help and serve. No matter how demanding the calls, he truly cares about his community and constantly strives to make a difference. Robert has spent nearly three decades as a licensed engineer, prominent businessman in Gaston County. He is Executive Vice President and Chairman of the Board of Bean Construction Company in Cherryville, where he has worked for more than 29 years. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from North Carolina State University in Raleigh, and has been a licensed professional engineer since 1988. He is a current member of the Gaston County Economic Development Commission since 2013, and was appointed to the Gaston County Health Board in 2012 as a professional engineer appointee. And I actually called him about that appointment. I stopped just a minute. I knew he was really involved in a lot of other things, and I was kind of expecting him to turn me down, but he said, "If you need me, I'm ready. I'm ready to serve." That's the way Robert is. He continues to serve now on the Consolidated Health and Human Services Board. His vast experience and engineering background have been a true resource to many boards and committees he has served, including the Charitable Chamber Commerce Board, the Gaston Regional Chamber Board, Small Business Committee Chair, Leadership Gaston Board, Gaston Together 2012-2017, also Gaston 2020 Committee. He has also served a nine-year stint on the Habitat for Humanity, a Gaston County Board, where he has chaired Construction Committee from 2004 to 2010. Robert also serves on the Greater Gaston Development Corporation Alliance for Growth, for which he is, which he currently chairs the Sites, Building, and Infrastructure Committee, the Community Foundation Board since 2013, where he serves as Development Committee, and the Charitable Impact Fund Committee Chairman, 2014 through 2016. He recently served on the 2015 Gaston County Caromont Investment Task Force Committee, and I served with him and enjoyed that process, and I appreciate you serving on that also, Robert. He is a dedicated member of the Shelby Seventh Day Adventist Church, where he serves on the Board, and has served in multiple leadership roles, including Deacon, Head Deacon, Elder, and Head Elder, Treasurer, Sabbath School Superintendent, '23 through 2013, Dominican Republic Mission Trip Construction Coordinator, Lighthouse Fellowship Church Board, and 2015 Chair of the Church Building Committee. Robert, the Gaston County Commission is indebted to you for your many years of service and your continuing, continuing efforts to encourage growth in Gaston County and improve the quality of life for our citizens. On behalf of Gaston County Commission, it is my pleasure to present you with the William Gaston Award.
I'll give this to you. Thank you. I'd like for you to say a few words. Can we hold that for you?
I'll set it right here. I was a little bit nervous coming up of the presentation because there's a lot of closet doors that need to be, remain shut. First of all, I'd like to thank the County Commissioners for this nomination and the award. I'm very humbled by it. I'm very honored to receive it. I was blessed to be raised in a family of six children, where my parents not only taught us the importance of giving back, but gave and set great examples for us. My father once told me, he said, "Son, whatever you do, leave it better than you found it." That's just how I live. And again, I'm humbled by this nomination and the award, and very honored to receive it. So, I thank you very much.
Okay, next, Commissioner Williams has a presentation to Annette Carter. Annette, with you and friends or family, come up.
Is everybody? Everybody coming up with you? If anyone's coming up with you, Donna.
I'm your friend.
I knew we would find one eventually. If we kept looking around the room, we would find one. Mr. Luckett, would you like to come stand up here with us? And Mr. Booker, Ms. McGroggins? Mr. Dedman? Anybody that doesn't know Annette that would like to just come stand with the crowd? We've got to make it look good for the camera back here. All right, well, after about a week, we have scaled this back to three pages, thanks to hard work by Ms. Buff. So, we have got this to where we should be out by nine. So, we'll, we'll work on it. Annette Carter has spent more than 25 years serving the citizens of Gaston County. Born and raised in Gastonia, she is a graduate of Ashley High School, attended Central Piedmont Community College and Gaston College. In 1981, she was a member of the first class of the UNC School of Medicine Vascular Technology Education Program. She recently retired after 32 years of caring for many in our community as a registered vascular technologist for Carolina Surgery. She was a charter member of the North Carolina Vascular Technologist. Annette's personal investment in her community is reflected in her vast civil contributions. Her sense of community has led her to hold positions on these boards, name a few, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the School Grace Commission, the Aquatic Wellness Center Committee, Chair of the Positive Action Citizens Committee, the Courthouse Jail Facility in November of 1993, Chair of the Courthouse Dedication Committee in 98. Former County Commissioner Chairman David Klein said of the Courthouse Dedication Committee that "the leadership provided by Ms. Carter brought this group of diverse people together without any friction." However, it is with little doubt that Annette's most prominent impact can be attributed to her dedication to the students and families of Gaston County as a representative on the Gaston County Board of Education for 18 years representing the Dallas Township. She was selected by her fellow board members to serve as Vice Chair twice in 1996 through 98, and again in 2006 through 2008, and as the Board's Chair in 1998 through 2000, and again in '08 to 2010. At that time, she was the first to ever be selected to serve as Chairperson twice, a testament to her, the confidence her Board had in her leadership. During her tenure, Annette strove to ensure that all students were given a chance to succeed by working to provide a more equitable distribution of funding and resources, especially in schools with a high poverty rate. The Howland School of Technology was open during her tenure on the Board. Annette was also instrumental in the passage of the '92, '01, and '07 School Bond Referendums for school construction and renovation projects. This dedicated work resulted in more technology-advanced classrooms for teachers and students alike. Her dedication earned her much-deserved recognition when her former, or her fellow board members nominated her, and she was named to the 2010 North Carolina State School Board Association's All-State School Board for Outstanding Boardsmanship. I think that kind of means the best of the best in North Carolina. Is that, that'd have been a quicker way to put that. In the nomination of her, they stated, quote, "While Board Chair Ms. Carter endeavored to create good board and community rapport, she encouraged the use of parent surveys to assess customer satisfaction. She promoted good boardsmanship among board members and sought to bring harmony and unity on board issues. A consensus builder, she was unyielding in her efforts to get additional local funding." I think every Commissioner could say amen to that. Unyielding. "She met with the County Commissioners and brought about better relations and a cohesiveness between the two boards, and helped county leaders understand the needs and how funds would be used. She is able to ensure, she was able to ensure the Board understood staff needs, issues, and initiatives, and made sure the Board members support important school programs. During her tenure on the Board, she has made a greater impact on education than any other elected educational leader in this community," end quote. Annette's hard work didn't end with her service on the Board of Education. In 2013, she was appointed to the Caromont Health Board of Directors, where she was again recognized for her leadership, and was elected to serve on the Board's Executive Committee as the Secretary of the Board in 2004. She's also chaired a number of other committees, including the Joint Conference Committee, where she works very closely with the medical staff on issues important to them and to the Board. Her talents, vision, and cooperative spirit were very instrumental in the passage of the 2015 Historical Lease Agreement between Caromont and Gaston County. Her childhood church, First United Methodist in Gastonia, continues to be her place of worship. She has served on the church's Scholarship Committee since 2014. Annette, the County Commission is indebted to you for your many years of service and for your continuing efforts to make Gaston County a better place to live. Your frontline and behind-the-scenes work is inspiring and has touched many, many lives. On behalf of the County Commission, it is my pleasure to present you the William Gaston Award.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Can we take this?
There are some special supporters on the back row, and there's five little Williams children and the mom, and I was tickled pink that they came. And I understand they've never been to a meeting to see their dad, but they came, came tonight, so, you know, I feel like I just walked down memory lane. I appreciate the recognition and honoring us tonight. But, you know, truly, this is just a confirmation of you, of your leadership in this county and those Commissioners before you, because you've given us the opportunity, as Jason said, you know, all these opportunities came to me through this body. And I think I certainly need to thank you also for the Commissioner's School of Excellence, because you have given our students an opportunity to understand this county that we live in, understand your leadership. So, on behalf of the students as well, I think we all need to thank you for, for giving us this opportunity. You know, during the dedication of this courthouse, and we did that on June 20, 1998, and I keep this book out, this was the dedication book, many in here helped with that. But in, in this book, we honored Judge William Gaston, our county's namesake. His quote is in our book, and it says, "Our people have deep-rooted reverence for their institutions." And I think that kind of sums up everything for us. We take pride in our facilities, in our organizations, and I believe he knew that that is required to be a good county, to be good citizens. So, I, I would like to end it by saying, I think my circle's completed now with this honor, and I thank you so very much. Thank you again.
We have a couple of other items of business in the work session, and Commissioner Williams is going to do a couple more now. But all of you that's received the recognition, if you will stay around a few minutes, we'll take a break between this meeting and our regular scheduled meeting. Get all the pictures in. Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And Ms. Carter is right, this is actually the first time my wife and kids have ever been to a County Commission meeting, so it only took them three years and Annette Carter to come, so I don't, I don't really know what that means. But anyway, I guess it is what it is. They love Ms. Annette. They love Ms. Annette. All right, we're going to do the proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month. I know some people gasp when the County Commission mentions adoption, but this is All right, thank you, ladies. All right, whereas, every child deserves love, support, security, and a permanent place to call home. Eight children in Gaston County Foster Care are currently awaiting loving and permanent adoptive families. Nearly all of these children have special needs because of the physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, because they need to be spaced, placed as a sibling group, because they are minorities, or because they're school-aged. There are families able and willing to adopt children with special needs, and finding forever families for waiting children is our goal in Gaston County. Whereas, we never outgrow the need for family. 2015 is a year to focus on older youth in foster care who are waiting to be adopted and the urgency they face as they begin their transition from foster care. Creating lifelong connections for these young people is critical to helping them prepare for success in adulthood. Children and youth awaiting adoption also need extra patience and support to help them overcome previous hardships. Birth parents need support and compassion, and adoptive families deserve respect and support. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of November 2015 as Adoption Awareness Month. And in honor of this event, we encourage citizens, community agencies, the faith community organizations, businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor the families, and focus attention on those who live in the shadow of an uncertain future while they await permanent families. And I will give this to Ms. Norris and Ms. Calhoun, if you guys have anything you want to say. Thank you very much.
We thank you for recognizing this important month for the children in our community that are waiting for forever homes. And just for anybody that's interested, we have what's called a heart gallery, which is a display of all the children in North Carolina that are up for adoption, that are our foster kids throughout the state. It will be in display at the Public Library for the month of November, and at Bethlehem Church, November 20 through 22. So, anyone that is interested, you're able to view those photos of those beautiful children that are looking for homes. And of course, if you're interested in learning more about what we do and how you can be involved, please don't hesitate to contact us. So, thank you again.
Thank you. All right, and finally, Ms. Susan Lockridge. Come on up. Don't be scared. Whereas, Susan has worked in the Register of Deeds Office since 1986, and was elected as register in 2004, re-elected in '08 and 2012. Whereas, Susan has worked to update the office through technology while making real estate records available online, offering electronic records, online marriage applications, vital record requests, and statewide birth records. And whereas, Susan has obtained certification from the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds, and holds an advanced Register of Deeds certification from the School of Government, received a Chancellor Certificate of Public Administration from the University of Missouri, and whereas, Susan has served as Secretary, Treasurer, and Chair of District Two as the Register of Deeds Association. Whereas, Susan has served the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds as historian, treasurer, secretary, second Vice President, and President-elect, and whereas, Susan was sworn in as the President of the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds at the 63rd Annual Conference on September 15. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners congratulate Susan S. Lockridge upon being named President of the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds. Susan? Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks for being here.
Commissioners, manager, I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity and this resolution, and for the citizens of Gaston County. It's an honor to be your register, and as I served this great state of North Carolina as the President, it's not only exciting, but it's humbling to be elected by your peers. And just want to let you know that you're in good shape here in Gaston County when I'm out of the office, by my great staff that's back behind me, and your, your needs will always be taken care of. Thank you.
All right, next, Commissioner Mickey Price will do a, to commend Gaston County Senior Games Participant who won medals at the North Carolina Senior Games Event.
Would the Senior Games Participant please join me at the podium? Whereas, between March 5th and April 29, 2015, Gaston County Senior Games had 175... Whereas, between March the 5th and April 29th, 2015, Gaston County Senior Games had 175 local registered participates. Fifty years and over participate in the local games, and 50 of those participants qualified for the North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, which were held in Raleigh, North Carolina, and other surrounding regions between September 21st and October 15th, 2015. And whereas, the state finals were held every year in Raleigh where participants compete against others in their same age category from different counties. And the Gaston County Senior Games sent 50 participants to represent Gaston County at the 2015 North Carolina Senior State Finals. And whereas, participants can compete in sporting events, silver arts, which includes literary, heritage, and visual arts, and performing arts during state finals. And participants must prepare and practice year-round to qualify for state finals. Whereas, 45 of the 50 Gaston County participants at state finals won a total of 45 medals, 14 gold medals, 22 silver medals, and nine bronze medals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners convenes and commends the North Carolina Senior Games State Final winners, namely Rex Bachelor, Lloyd Beaver, Leon Bostic, Barry Cobble, John Cheshire, Elaine Estes, Colin Freestone, Jackie Freestone, Larry Furturk, Ann Helms, David Hosteller, which is a 2015 national winner, Robert Hovis, Tom Catzleris, Phyllis Keener, Lois Merritt, Howard Neely, Margaret Paul Mary, also a 2015 national winner, Wilford Powell, Murgas Ravel, Bob Thornburg, Lucinda Thornburg. And congratulate them upon winning various medals and awards at the 2015 North Carolina Senior Games State Finals, and for their dedication, hard work, and continual support to the senior games in maintaining an active, healthy lifestyle, this to be adopted November 10th, 2015. Let's give them a hand. And I'm sure they've selected someone to speak on their behalf, so I'll turn the podium over to that individual. Here's your commendation.
They're pushing me. Okay, I've spoken here before. Thank all you commissioners for inviting us tonight. And like I said, y'all need to come to senior games. Y'all promised, but Mr. Cigar, I think, has come to some meetings, but I don't think he's been out to do the games. But anyway, we start in April, and March and April, we practice all year. And this year, next year, if you qualify in the county, then you can register to go to the state. And then in 2017, the Nationals will be in Birmingham. And so, I'm looking forward to that because my son lives in Birmingham. But I'd like to invite all of you and anybody out here, and I know all of you've got parents and grandparents that could come out, and anybody over 50. And like Mickey said, we are in age groups of five years. You don't compete. I don't compete against somebody that's 50 years old. So, we have lots of fun, and the silver arts, anybody does that, you'll have fun doing all of that. And I know we've got lots of grandmothers and stuff that quilt, and we'd just love to have all of you out there and tell everybody about it. We'll have lots of advertising in January. We'll have a kickoff in February. And look in the papers for all of that. So, I'd like to invite all of you to come out.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. And let's keep these individuals' mind. Anybody else want to say a few words?
Thank you.
They're pushing you, too.
I want to thank the county commissioners for funding the Senior Olympics by way of the county park and recreation. And they did a magnificent job working with us old people and getting us here, there, and yonder where we needed to be. And so, we're very thankful for what y'all do also.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the county commissioners for letting the old people be able to dissipate against each other. I've been gone down for 10 years and had one or more. But I said, this year, I got to win a medal. And so, I hold long jump, the first place in long jump in North Carolina, and I work hard for it. So, God has been good to me. At 82-years-old, I didn't think I'd ever win a medal.
Too late. Anybody else going once? And twice? Sold. Y'all do a good crowd. Y'all do a good crowd. Thank you.
Let me thank each one of you for representing our county very well. If I get to be old, I might join you.
Well, we don't think we're old. We think we're young.
You act like it. Look at the scrappy bunch. Okay, certificates in appreciation for public service. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talents, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Norma Coleman, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And the Honorable Judge Ralph Jingles, Juvenile Crime Prevention Counsel. And as most of you know, that Judge Jingles served this community quite well, but unfortunately, he had kind of an untimely passing this, what, month ago? Within the last few weeks. I knew Judge Jingles. He one time served on the P. Monk Council Executive Board. He was actually an Eagle Scout. So, but anyway, we appreciate the service and the dedication of those individuals. Next, we have citizen recognition, and then we're going to have these extension ladies come up and tell us about what they're doing. Wilma Ratsford Craig. Wilma?
I have...
Good to see you.
Ma'am?
It's good to see you, he said.
I have been talking with you and turning in reports and just keeping on, keeping on. And we are so happy to have our libraries open all over the county. And I wanted to come and in person say thank you. And we're glad that you've done that, and we appreciate so very much the fact that the libraries are open for the hours and citizens can not have to wait, hey, what day this is. So, thanks for doing it, and keep on doing. Good words. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilma. Thank you for all of those years of service you've given to the county. And you held that, the need for our libraries to be open for all of those years, and we certainly appreciate you standing up for the citizens. Thank you. Next is David Turner.
State your name and address. My name is David Turner. I live at Magnolia Place in Lowell, North Carolina, Owens Court. Thank you for letting me allow me to speak on an emergency situation. I'm a war veteran. I'm retired on a fixed income. I live in a senior community, retired at Magnolia Place. We were in the news yesterday, all channels. What happened, we're trying to get the city to help us for two years now, almost, for a retaining wall. We didn't ask for money. We didn't ask for them to build it, just approval to go on up to the governor, to get the Army Corps of Engineers to help us on this retaining wall. It's an emergency situation now. Gaston County emergency is on stand-down right now. And we're in desperate need of a retaining wall. We have three engineering reports that claims it's an imminent, dangerous hillside. And here are pictures right here from this week, from all this rain that we're having. And I'd like to share this with you and appeal to you because the city is at fault and they're not taking responsibility. The former city manager and the city council, most of them members now, had this, we had this builder that bought the place, and he abandoned it in 2009. He stripped the whole area. And they gave him permits, no inspections. And we've been appealing this for two years, almost two years now, to the city manager, the city council, and they just don't want to hear about it. And now, we're on an emergency situation where these pictures tell you more words than I can share. But I request that you help us if you can.
Yeah, share them with, give them to our clerk, and we have a motion to accept. A second. All those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Now, we have, the commissioners tonight and some of our staff got to enjoy a lovely meal prepared by our extension service ladies. And at this time, Ms. Karen Bernard is going to come forward and tell a little bit about what all they do. And it's amazing the number of volunteer hours these ladies give each year in this community. So, Ms. Bernard?
Good evening. They moved it since I was here last. Okay, the Extension and Community Association referred to as ECA is a state-affiliated volunteer group. We support, we are supported by North Carolina Cooperative Extension and work to strengthen families and improve the quality of life throughout our community. Much of what we do is about building relationships, which fuels the flames for volunteerism throughout Gaston County. What we do, Gaston County ECA does a lot. We help with educational programs provided by the staff of the Cooperative Extension. We work with community organizations and nonprofit groups to provide programs that support health, education, and quality of life activities. We teach a variety of craft and leisure activities such as ceramics, paper crafting, sewing, quilting, and jewelry making. Gaston County ECA is comprised of eight clubs with a total of 93 members. Over the past 12 months, we have provided at least 18,000 volunteer hours. This is an estimated value of $396,000 to Gaston County. ECA members are very focused on supporting the continuing education of our local youth. In 2015, two $1,000 scholarships were provided to Gaston County students who began college in the fall. Our scholarship recipients this year were Malik Curranz and Sarah Pickert. ECA continues to provide scholarships through fundraising activities. Members also collect and distribute school supplies, as well as make chair bags for classrooms, and have served as proctors for testings done throughout Gaston County schools. ECA members serve as volunteer leaders with several cooperative extension programs. During the past year, members have helped with Let's Get Cooking program. It's a monthly nutrition workshop done in partnership with the Extension and the Gaston County Senior Center. ECA continues to provide hands-on learning activities with our youth through the 4H Super Summer Program and other youth classes offered throughout the year. This year, the children engage in a variety of cooking, sewing, and ceramic classes. We will be supporting the Eat Local, Eat Healthy campaign of the National Volunteer Outreach Network throughout the next two years. This initiative supports our continued work with Cooperative Extension's local food programs such as school gardens, nutrition and food preservation, and homegrown Gaston. Gaston ECA provides a variety of monthly workshops that support life enrichment and lifelong learning. Classes have included a culinary workshop at the Art Institute of Charlotte. Ms. Charlotte Craig presented her experience as one of the Girls of the Atomic City, and a variety of classes, including sewing, knitting, quilting, card making, et cetera. ECA members have also worked throughout the year to make much-needed updates to the Lucille Tatum Center. They include working with the Gaston County for the installation of new flooring in the dining room, exterior landscaping during the summer by planting flower beds. ECA members have painted both interior and exterior portions of the building. At this time, ECA would like to take this opportunity to extend its appreciation to the Gaston County for supporting these recent updates to our center. Pie Day. Pie Day continues to be an annual ECA tradition. This event provides an opportunity for community fellowship with a chance to learn about ECA activities while tasting a variety of main dish and dessert pies. This event is used as an annual fundraising activity. We cordially invite residents to learn more about ECA by stopping by the Lucille Tatum Center or by contacting us by phone. There are many ways to become involved in our community. On behalf of Gaston County ECA, I would like to thank our elected officials for their continued support you've provided us with this organization. We will continue to strive to build up our community and strengthen families throughout Gaston County. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks again for you and the other ladies preparing such a wonderful meal for us this evening.
You're more than welcome, sir.
I don't know how I'm going to deal with that cake. When I get home, I'll try it.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is any other items at this time in the work session? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to bring forward, I spoke with the manager and Mr. Geske about something I wanted to see if we could do. I think Commissioner Williams may have put something up before, but just wanted to start looking into, it's called a Veterans Discount Program, and basically what it'd be to all Gaston County veterans. I asked Kurt to come tonight just to sort of, there's already some initial legwork already in place. But what it does, it offers the veterans of Gaston County, they already have a certain card that they can use, but this will be offered to participating business. We'll list that with Gaston County on what discounts are available. Like I said, it's an ongoing progress that we're going to try to work on. But I asked Mr. Geske to come tonight and talk to the manager about this, just in part this week to try to get it started with Veterans Day being tomorrow. We're so proud of our veterans and what they do for our community and what they've done for our country, that just wanted to give back and wanted to start the work on that. Just wanted the board to be aware of some of the things that we're trying to do here in Gaston County.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, thank you. Any other item? At this time, we're going to adjourn the work session, and we will take a five-minute break, which usually takes us 10 or 15 minutes. But anyway, we'll take a five-minute break at this time. Yeah.
This time I turn my mic on. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This time I called a meeting, our November the 10th, 2015, a legislature board meeting. We got some county commissioners. And our first item of business is some zoning matters. And we will take up one zoning map change, one ETJ relinquishment, two historic preservation designation, and one town Dallas ETJ appointment. Before we go into a public hearing, let me outline the rules and procedures for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their names and addresses for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do we have a motion to go into public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
That was a motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price, I believe. All those in favor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is this the one that we continue?
Continue.
Okay, okay.
Item number one, the commission will take comments on zoning case Z-15-09, property owner Crescent Communities LLC, general rezoning of property parcel 203369 and 203309 located on Lucio River Bend Highway from the R1 Single Family Limited zoning district with CH and the US overlays with a SH overlay on a portion of the parcel 203369 to the C3 light commercial zoning districts. This time I'll ask David Williams, Planning and Development Services Director, for comments. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Commission and Planning Board. Just to restate, the zoning map amendment application number is Z-1509. It's for a general rezoning request for property parcels 203369 and 203309 to be zoned from R1 residential, single-family with urban standards, corridor highway, and special highway overlays to the C3, which is your general commercial district with those overlay districts mentioned. The applicant is Mr. Melvin D. Corr, and property owner is Crescent Communities LLC, represented by Mr. Don Donald P. Reed. Mr. Corr is present tonight for any questions. The subject property is located on the Lucio River Bend Highway, which is in Mount Holly, North Carolina, in the River Bend township. Mr. Chairman, if I could refer to the VZ to go over some of the maps. The area in question is kind of bolded in light green here. I'll try to blow it up a little bit for you. Real narrow type property located on Lucio River Bend Highway, which is right here, sort of west of highway 16. So basically, if you follow my pen, this is the property that's under consideration for this request. As you can see, there's some commercial development to the north of it. And pretty much open space, that goes without saying, undeveloped property to the south of it, some city of Mount Holly property also in this particular area. Is the zoning area, which is hatched out in black, again, this is the area in question, highway 16 running to the east of it, Lucio River Bend Highway runs to the south of the property. And we have county zoning right here, R1 zoning, residential one, commercial one zoning district right here. Again, this is Mount Holly City limit property. And this is a smaller, just a little bit smaller map, so you can kind of see a bigger area of it. Mr. Chairman, the request is in the northeast small area district of the county's comprehensive land use plan. Key issues in that area was wildlife, habitat, availability of water and sewer, adequate roads and road system, greenways, parks, and recreational facilities. In terms of municipal coordination, we did notify the city of Mount Holly, but did not receive any comments back regarding this request. In terms of transportation, we did not have comments back from the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, for transportation planning at the time of agenda. I have handed that out to you tonight, and also the planning board has been made aware of that. In terms of consistency with the plan and the staff's conclusion that this request is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, public notices were provided in accordance with county policy. Planning staff received no calls in regards to this request. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation for this question.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. As any citizen that wishes to comment on this zoning change request, will you step to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You need to go to the podium.
Raleigh Holbert with 5015 Holbert Lane, Lucio River Bend Road. The only thing I ever saw on this thing was they put a sign up on the side of the road that said that it's getting it rezoned, and I didn't know where or why they're doing this. My property joins both sides of what they're talking about. I don't know if you can see it, but my property is on the same side of the road as theirs is, and it's a V. Okay. And I don't understand why they want to rezone this thing to business. It's been that way for a single family developing unless it has something to do with River Bend steam plant closing down because there's a railroad track behind there. My property joins the railroad track, so it actually divides the two pieces of property that they're talking about. I'm right in the middle of the two, and I don't know what it does to, it's going to affect my property in the future because I don't see, if they're wanting to rezone this for some reason, and they haven't said what they're planning on doing with it. Evidently, they may be taking the railroad track up and planning on getting more property in there to do something with it. I haven't heard anything about that. But I'm worried about what it would do to my property since they're wanting to rezone it on both sides. So I would like to be fully informed of what their future plans are and why they would like to rezone this.
Okay. Mr. Williams, there's a number of things that the property can be used for.
Um, right here, so right here's your name.
Excuse my property here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, currently residentially zoned, if the request was approved to the C3 district, it would open it up for commercial-type uses. Of course, at this point in the process, we don't require a site development plan for what the proposed uses would be, so the commission and the planning board will have to consider all the uses, which, you know, those uses was put in the agenda packet. Mr. Corr is here tonight that could probably speak to some of what his plans might be.
Okay. Thank you. All right, at that point, is there any question from any of the planning board members? Commissioners, Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Williams, back on your slide two there, you had the properties outlined in black, if you can foresee that. Is the one property we're talking about in question with the young man who just spoke, is that the little sliced-out section that is not shaded? That's the little V section there?
Right, I can put it on, if I can put it on Elmo, I can point that out to you.
And I guess what I'm asking, does that piece of property that you have go across the road there as well? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
And I think the other gentleman may have wanted to speak earlier, Joe.
Okay.
My name's Doug Corr, 631 Killian Road, Stanley. Yes, I am looking to rezone, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I'm looking to rezone it, I'm looking to do a speculative building on this, a flex building, and have no particular use for it at this point in time other than just to put a speculative building on it. I did approach Mr. Raleigh's wife about purchasing that piece of property from them, and they had no interest in selling it and so forth, so it's not like I haven't approached them and talked to them about it and so forth. The property behind it is an industrial lumberyard, and across from it is a landscaping location and so forth, which they actually sold the property to for that. It would be something similar that could go in there to what's there already. If I have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to our...
Can I ask the depth of that piece of property along the railroad track? It doesn't look like it's very much laying there. I don't know how, I don't know how to lie there.
They would be setbacks and all they couldn't build, but it is kind of narrowed, it narrows down at some points, but widens out according to the map that he showed us.
The one parcel that I am intending to use is about 72 feet deep.
Okay, yeah.
What about the setbacks? The setbacks on the front were 50 feet, or 50 feet, and on the rear is 25 feet. And my intent is to put a building in there that is either 50 or 60 foot deep, 125 or 300.
Okay. And this is spec building?
This is spec building.
Okay. Okay. Next item we have is the commission will take comments on ETJ 15-01 to consider acceptance of the request relinquished extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ by the town of McAdenville into the Gaston County zoning jurisdiction and the recommended Gaston County zoning district for the relinquished areas. And again, Mr. Williams, will you comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Commission and also Planning Board. For this amount of information, it's within your agenda packets. The county planning board is acting as the applicant with this action. McAdenville Town Council on September 8, 2015, voted to relinquish or release a portion of its extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is ETJ, or areas zoned by the cities outside the city limits from its jurisdiction to Gaston County with an effective date of December 7, 2015 at 12:01 a.m. The relinquished area consists of 98 parcels or 154.86 acres. The population, according to the Census Bureau, information is 100-plus persons. If approved, the county would assume enforcement administration of zoning subdivision, other similar codes, as well as land use planning for these areas. Staff has been working and coordinating the relinquishment with the town of McAdenville staff. As has been past procedure and directive by the county planning board, staff work to match up zoning districts when and where possible. The parcels are proposed to be either RS-20, which is a single-family 20,000 square foot, square feet, C2 highway commercial, I-2 general industrial with urban standards overlay, USO, and the corridor highway overlay districts. Planning staff was able to match mostly all zoning districts for the subject parcels in the ETJ to the counties, in most cases matching the use on the property. The transition process proceeded fairly smoothly. At this time, Mr. Chairman, if I could refer to the VZ to go over the ETJ proposed relinquishment. What I have, the first is a list of parcels, and again, this is in the planning board's packet and the board of commission packet. So, but just for the record, listing those parcels. As you can see, they're numerous in number. Turn it over, and there's also some right here at the top of that page. The area that McAdenville relinquished, turn this over, is highlighted in red. As you can see, some of the parcel in red is obviously north of I-85, and a vast majority of the area that's proposed, that's been relinquished, is south of Interstate 85.
That's Williams' way there. Does that leave any gaps between them and Belmont, or does this fill in?
I'm not sure about that, Mr. Chairman. I think that there'll be a transition between the town of McAdenville and the county, and then Belmont.
Okay.
There, I'm, there is some areas that are adjacent between McAdenville and Belmont currently with the ETJ. I'm not sure if it's city limits or is their ETJ. But be that as it may, there would be some adjacent.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Want to show you a map of, turn this map around, show you a map of McAdenville zoning prior to the relinquishment. This one parcel right here, and everything is bolded in red, which is proposed to be relinquished, is RA zoning. Here's your RS-20 zoning, more RS-20 zoning, and again, more RS-20 zoning. Here's your industrial manufacturing zoning right here in this particular area. So these are, these are the three areas that's being relinquished, which is bolded in red. Again, this information was also provided in your packet. These are what's being proposed for those parcels under the county zoning, which matched up fairly well with McAdenville zoning, R-20, 20,000 square foot lot size. Well, county zoning, which matched up with RS-20 for this particular parcel. Also, in this area, all this area right here would be proposed to be RS-20, which is basically matching up with McAdenville. And here's some RS-20, slide it up. RS-20 down here to the south, and here's the industrial property, which was that formerly, what I mentioned, that manufacturing one in McAdenville. And that is all of the maps. Mr. Chairman, planning staff did receive requests for a revision prior to the original October 27th public hearing date by Mr. Michael A. Dove to place his property parcel 185614 under his ownership into the I-2 general industrial instead of the RS-20 as previously shown. Mr. Dove's property is adjacent to industrially zoned property. The revision request was made and is within your agenda packet and part of the board action resolution with the other parcels and on the map proposed. Notices were sent out to both the affected and adjacent property owners and placed, and we placed an advertisement in the local newspaper, and two signs giving notice of the public hearing were placed at various and highly traveled locations. The notification process met county policy and also state statutes. The county and McAdenville planning staffs, again, have worked closely together to coordinate the process and address any issue with the transition. Planning staff did receive one call for information with this matter, and that was Mr. Michael Dove regarding his zoning request. This concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do we have any citizen wanting to comment on this zoning relinquishment of the ETJ? Say, and now, do we have any questions from the planning board? Any commissioner? Well, if not, at this time, I'll excuse the planning board to the First Appearance Courtroom 2029 for their deliberation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sir. Sir.
And next, we have historic preservation, the Craig Farmstead property. The commission will take comments on the request for to designate the Craig Farmstead property located at 118 Craiglin Lane off Union and New Hope Roads, SR 2435, Gaston County, North Carolina, as historic property pursuant to Part 3C, Articles 19, Chapter 160A of the General Statutes of North Carolina. And before I take any comments, I will ask Ms. Lucy Peniger, Historic Preservation Vice Chairman, to provide a brief overview. Ms. Peniger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm here tonight in place of John Russell, who is our chairman. These are in his township too, but I want to tell you just a couple of things about it. This is a rare surviving farmstead in a fast-developing landscape. It reflects a tangible part of our history. This grouping of structures date between 1852 and 1910. The second farmhouse that was built in 1886 is a well-preserved example of local builder Lawson Henderson Stowe's work. There were four generations of Craigs that lived on this property or owned this property. The first William Moore Craig and wife Margaret Neely had three sons. They built the first house and the log barn. Then William Newton Craig, one of their sons, was married to Emily Wilson. They had six children and obviously needed more space, and they built the 1886 two-story house. They added the framed meat house and a large center passage barn and a corn crib. Ralph Ray Craig and Grace Elizabeth Moore had four children, and the daughter Mary Wilson Craig came back to live with them in their later years and stayed there from 1960 until 1998, when she went into a nursing home. The son, you know, as Bill Craig, and his wife Wilma Ratchford, who is with me tonight, worked the farm, increased it from early cotton to dairy, fruit trees, poultry, and beef cattle, among other things, and they have seen to the restoration of several of the outbuildings on that property. You may remember that in 2001, the last brickmaker in America was filmed there on that farm, and that was a TV movie. These people that have lived on this farm were outstanding farmers responsible to the conservation and preservation of this land and the structures. The first one, William Newton Craig's obituary said that he was a man of considerable wealth and influence. But we all know Bill and Wilma, and we know that Bill has served on the Soil and Water Conservation Board for over 40 years, and most of that time, or at least half of that time, as the chairman. And Bill and Wilma were listed at the Cattlemen's Hall of Fame, and in 1987, they became a Century Farm, North Carolina Century Farm Program. They're part of Voluntary Agricultural District Program. Wilma served for over 33 years as a teacher and also on our Historic Preservation Commission, 35 years, until she's just now retired from that. So we are suggesting that we designate 7.32 acres, and it is already on the National Register, and it has a perpetual conservation easement with Soil and Water Conservation District, and this designation will further protect the structures.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will take any citizen comment on this request. Any questions from our commissioners? Well, at this time, I'll accept a motion to approve. Have a motion by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Ms. Peniger. Next is another historic preservation, the Chronicle Mill in Belmont. The commission will take comments on the request to designate the 1901 Chronicle Mill, Belmont, North Carolina, as historic property pursuant to Part 3C, Article 19, Chapter 160A of the North Carolina General Statutes. Property is owned by Chronicle Mill Land LLC, located at 96 East Cotova Street, Belmont, North Carolina. Before I take comments, again, I will ask Ms. Lucy Peniger to provide a brief overview. Ms. Peniger?
Okay, the Chronicle Mill was built in 1901. It was the first mill in Belmont, and the principal investors were Robert Lee Stowe and Abel C. Lineberger. Stowe and Lineberger promoted, built, and managed 17 mills. 17, that's pretty good. The stockholders were referred to as the Cotton Mill Chieftains. They all helped our county become the world's largest textile center, the world's largest. So we are very indebted to these early members, the people that started these mills. This mill was named after Major William Chronicle, who was killed at the Battle of Kings Mountain and whose home place was near the site where the mill was later built. It started operations with some troubling weather. I don't know if people really realize this, but in 1902 February, they had 17 inches of snow, and a cyclone hit in June of 1902. That's enough to set anybody back, but they persevered and they kept on going. They started out with steam power, and then in 1908 changed over to electricity. They were one of the first industries in the United States in 1906 to install carrier humidification system, which later Stuart Kramer coined as air conditioning. So that's a pretty, those are pretty neat things about that particular mill. They started out with coarse-grade yarn, and in 1926 changed over to combed yarn. The mill itself shows various stages of development and adaptation, allowing the industry to grow. There is a fantastic plan for this mill. I don't know if you've seen this, but absolutely fantastic plan, using a significant historic building and redesigning it for a community mixed use. We are really proud to be part of this project. And Mr. John Church, who is the owner of the mill now, is here with us tonight, too, in the back. We're proposing 3.06 acres, which includes just the mill and not the part where the new hotel is going to go. the part where the new hotel is going to go, nor the part where the, the parking lot will be. We're just doing the mill.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peniger, and, uh, I was fortunate enough to attend the reception you had over there. Quite an amazing project and very ambitious on your part. Thank you. Is there any citizen wishing to comment on this request? None? Any question from the commissioners? None? Okay. Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Price, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Now, let me turn a page. We have, uh, one more. This is ex-territorial jurisdiction, Jewish jurisdiction. The county commission will take, uh, take citizen comment concerning application submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Dallas Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, representing the ex-territorial jurisdiction. The Dallas Board of Altsman has recommended Mr. Eric Clemmer. Are there any other applications to be received at this time? None? Any citizen comment? Any comments or question by the commissioners? At this time I'll accept a motion to point Mr. Eric Clemmer to their, the, uh, Board of Adjustments and, uh, let's see, that was made by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Fraley. All those in favor? That's unanimous. At this time, this concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board would like to thank each of you for your input. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Price to close the public hearing. This concludes our, wait a minute, I want to do that one. All in favor? I don't want to go that far. Now we get back into our regular agenda. At this time, we can approve our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Fraley made the motion, Commissioner Price seconded it. All those in favor? Do we have any citizen recognition at this time? Okay. First we have Joseph Capps. Will he come to the podium and, uh, and I assume Ms. Peggy Capps, if you want to head that way, uh, if you don't mind, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Capps, five fifty-three White Jenkins Road, Bessemer City. This is about the bonuses of the employees and part-time. It's too much money. I'm not opposed to bonuses, but seven hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars for full-time and part-time, it's too much. But the commissioners are not, they're employed by the county. They are elected by the people that are supposed to look after the county and the people, but the commissioners are looking out for themselves at the cost. At the last meeting and this meeting, you are trying to load your pockets. You do not need a bonus. Because we are not employed by the county, you serve at the discretion of the people of Gaston County. Nobody gives us, the taxpayers, a bonus. I had to use a credit card to pay my taxes, which are used for outrageous things like this.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Peggy Capps and I live at five five three White Jenkins Road, Bessemer City. He's my spouse, he can't hear very well. We're barely making it. I think I've sat here all night and I think I've seen a representation of about ten percent of Gaston County and I think you guys are not in the real world. Ninety percent of the people in Gaston County don't even have the gas to get to a meeting. We sat at home for two weeks. People who have a car, I mean, people, most people don't even have cars they could drive and when they do have a car, they don't have the gas to go to these places and volunteer and do all this stuff that you're putting our tax money in. And every year our taxes go up. Our, my taxes went up again this year and like my husband says, we don't have the money to pay it, but it has to be paid by January first. So I called and asked him if we could put it on a credit card. You know what they said? They're going to charge me to pay. They're going to charge me twenty dollars and fifty cents to extra above the tax cost to pay on the credit card, which is, we're up against a wall here and you guys are putting us there. You're not being very good stewards with our tax money when you want to give out bonuses to people who don't even work for Gaston County. I'm like him. I don't see anything wrong with bonuses, but seven hundred and fifty dollars and three hundred is way too much. Give them a hundred dollars, I think that'd be, I'd be grateful for it. Nobody gives us a bonus. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. We, we consider everything. No other citizen comments? We approve the agenda, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor? We have approved the consent agenda. Do we have anything back from the planning board? Okay, we will take a couple. We have, uh, we have one item here to authorize a one-time bonus for part-time, full-time employees of Gaston County. Commissioner Williams, do you have a motion? Does we have a second? Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a, uh, amendment to the proposal to exclude the county commissioners from the, uh, bonus.
Okay. Just second his motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah. Um, so I guess my question would be, what, what's the catalyst for that? And I know we've done this for six years and I don't think that's ever been the case before, so I know, uh, I don't know what the problem is.
Any comments? Uh, Commissioner Brown.
I guess I'd just like to add our comments were, I think maybe take kind of context today or not even a comment, it was added by, uh, what we thought was the Gazette, but we didn't ask for, to be put, we weren't asked to be included on this. As part of the package that Gaston County has, we have to fall under some category for our pay plan. Um, so I, I say that is, it wasn't like we were out looking for, uh, the decision to be made for that, so I just wanted to put that on record. It wasn't something we included ourselves in, it's just something we're already a part of just because of the way the pay plan falls for, uh, how we are put into it, but like I said, uh, just wanted to put that on record.
Okay. By the way, did Mr. Kegner ever call in? Someone said he might, he's not on the phone. Okay. Uh, well, we have, uh, is that amendment? Let's see, what was your motion?
To exclude the commissioners from the bonus payout.
Okay, we have a motion to exclude the commissioners from the, the, the pay item is, uh, this time with it, is also in favor of that motion? Opposed? Okay. That fails, so we have a motion to approve this, uh, this bonus. Is, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Did the guys get back yet? Uh, we didn't have any items pulled, uh, and we have appointments. And at this time, Commissioner Fraley, do you have any appointments?
I do, uh, Commissioner Carter, I've got one, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, uh, and this will go under the county manager designated and it'll be Mr. Bryant Morehead.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just have two, please, sir. Uh, one is for the Q N R C reappointment requested by, uh, Mr. Charlie Hefner and the other one side of that would be, um, the Caramont Health Board, uh, Mr. Tim Goff.
Have a motion and a second. There's a second. Second, Commissioner Price. All those in favor? Thank you. Commissioner Price, if you have any.
Yes, I have one to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Keith Hart. Flag.
Second, motion and a second. All those in favor? Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Carl Baber. He doesn't want to, okay. Uh, well, no, none at this time then.
Okay.
Overtend that.
Second, on the recension. We have a, uh, full appointment to Farmers Relief Fund trustees, sixteen appointments as indicated on the attached list. All can be made with one single vote.
I move for approval of the list.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And the, uh, request for a, uh, Quality of Natural Resources Committee reappointment, Charles Hefner, I'll make that as.
Flag.
How did it? He already did that. Yeah, this is a full board appointment. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor? Do you have a copy of his? We'll just do that at the December.
Okay, just want to make sure if you needed something done. Thank you.
And I think that I had, but I don't know where they are. I'll hold mine until next meeting. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner's report. Mr. Fraley.
None.
Mr. Brown.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Price.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say I attended the, uh, launch, I guess was the word that was used of the P and N Railroad, which, uh, you can make some further comments, but, uh, um, the train ride was, uh, very comfortable in they in the, the, the compartment that we were in. Uh, and also we heard a little bit about the, uh, train ride to Christmas Town, which I'll let you speak more on that, but, and then we attended, I attended and you did the, uh, groundbreaking for the advanced manufacturing facility at Gaston College, uh, which the layout and the illustrations were, uh, looked very good for that type of, uh, manufacturing center. Also attended the Gaston Family Health Service, um, Health Board last month and male parent was reelected as chairman of that board and Bob Toll was reelected as vice chairman. No, not anything else. Thank you, sir. Oh, I did want to say, on the mission of mercy, we provided, uh, saw over five hundred and fifty-two patients, provided over four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars worth of dentistry and provided twenty-five, uh, units of dentures for, um, and the dentures were local people. So just, uh, a thank you from Gaston Family for our participation in being a sponsor of that event. Thank you.
They served quite a few people then. Okay. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if we have that video, a couple of pictures, if we can get those on the screen. Uh, you'll see here, this is the, uh, updated pictures for the Caramont ED. You see the helipad there, it's starting to come together, uh, if you look really nice. It's going to be a very, very nice facility. So you can kind of go through, just wanted you to see some of these aerial shots. Uh, this one was here recent. Uh, and again, another shot of the, the helipad. Uh, we're pretty excited at Caramont. Actually, believe it or not, by the end of this year, uh, we're going to be ready to go with the pediatric ED already, so this thing's moving quick. And then it should be fully functional, ready to go by the middle of, uh, two thousand and sixteen, by July, so, uh, you can see some of these, uh, pictures on the screen. It's looking really good, coming together. Uh, we're very excited about it, a lot of improvements around the campus. Uh, I did want to recognize, uh, Ms. Carter, who was here earlier, who received the William Gaston Award. Uh, she has done phenomenal work on that, uh, Caramont Board as well as, uh, Mr. Donnie Loftus is with us. And without people like, uh, Mr. Loftus and Ms. Carter, uh, I don't think we would have gotten that lease signed, uh, earlier this year. So, uh, they've done, uh, yeoman's work on that, uh, board. So they've, uh, really done a lot of, a lot of work, really represented, uh, uh, the commission, the citizens, and the hospital, uh, very well, very well. So I just want to thank them for their service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a couple, I started out my day today with the, uh, Gaston County Healthcare Commission that, down at the hospital. It's a, it's a, a group from across the county representing many, many organizations that, uh, work on, uh, trying to improve healthcare in the county and to, and their citizens to do a better job on their own. Several people recognized companies in, I think, one church in obtaining a, a level of, uh, providing, uh, good health, uh, practices to their employees. Uh, it was, it was really encouraging to see that that's happened, uh, going on. In fact, we've had the Gaston Healthcare Commission in place for about twenty years now and we kind of a model, others are modeling it across the state. Charlotte's way behind us even in that, so, uh, we have a lot of citizens working on that, trying to improve, uh, the, the practices of citizens and, and their, and their health. I did attend the, uh, after that, the, uh, opening or the dedication of the P and N Rail Christmas, the train to Christmas Town, USA. And we'll, there is, uh, Mickey, excuse me, do you remember the, uh, when they can order tickets online? I think it's, uh, town, town to, uh, train to christmastown.com. Uh, anybody want to go and look on that? Uh, and they're going to be operating, uh, I think it's right after Thanksgiving and up through Christmas. I think it's going to be on the weekends for a couple of weeks and then it's going to be every, uh, day, uh, after that, up through Christmas. Uh, and it's going to be, uh, it's a wonderful, wonderful venue for citizens and visitors to participate in. And I did attend the dedication of the advanced manufacturing facility at Gaston College at two today. Uh, that is a tremendous, uh, project. It's, uh, taken the efforts of a lot of people, including this board, to participate in the financing of that and some grants from, uh, federal and some of the Golden Leaf money. Uh, and that is going to be one of the, it's going to be a star in our crown over there at Gaston College because the, uh, employers that have these jobs that need these well-trained people in what we calling advanced manufacturing, uh, they're going to come right out of Gaston College and so if there's any potential students out there listening, listening, you need to get involved, uh, it's going to be a great opportunity because it'll get you ready for some very good paying jobs. Now, do we have anything back? Okay, uh, Mr. Moore?
Uh, in, uh, your first, uh, resounding case, Z fifteen oh nine, the application of Mr. Core, uh, on the Lucia River. In your first resounding case, Z1509, the application of Mr. Core on the Lucia River Bend Highway, the planning board recommended approval with a unanimous vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion by this board? Motion by Commissioner Frady, second by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor? Okay, next.
And the ETJ relinquishing case, 1501, this is McAdenville's ETJ that is being turned over to the county. The board recommended approval on a unanimous vote of those staff recommendations that were outlined in the map that Mr. Williams showed you.
Okay. Have a motion? Motion by Brown, and, I mean, Commissioner Price made a motion, second by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor? Thank you, it's approved. Do we have a manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll offer a very brief report this evening. In addition to all the things that are stated in my written report, we're spending a good deal of time fielding inquiries about the township grants, and that process is moving forward, as well as the Caramont Investment Task Force projects, which we're also working on, doing some project scoping and due diligence on that. And then finally, we're certainly giving fair attention to the Woodcock Property Project and doing a little bit more investigation of that and determining exactly what demands that would impose on us financially and logistically. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any report from our attorney?
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman. I do need to request a brief closed session to discuss an industrial commission claim, Lori Hursey versus the county.
Before we go into closed session, I will make a comment on the county manager. I really appreciate the reports you're putting in the Gazette to the citizens about the activity of the county and sort of the status of many things, and I really appreciate you doing that, and they're well read. Sure. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? You get the motion in a second.